Look for a motion to approve the agenda unless there's amendment.
So, um.
I guess a point of order.
Okay.
So workshops aren't designed to be making any decisions in.
Yeah.
And when we make a motion to approve it, we are in fact doing that.
So we're gonna slash that out.
Yeah.
We're not gonna make any motions in this workshop.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, okay. And I will tell the public if you wanna, something, if you wanna fill out a presentation card, or a public comment card during the door. So Mary Rowe has been given permission to have first public comment prior to public comments after the presentation. So Mary, you're up and running. Thank you Miranda for your ability to jump in there and help out.
I'm Mary Rowe. Regarding your prioritizations for the year, I believe that there is value in discussing your priorities as the prior VOC often spend time on time-consuming low priority and superfluous manners. And often commissioners did not address crucial problems even when that put our county government in legal jeopardy and endangered our citizens. A list of priorities can be useful, but I believe that it should be longer than the three that you mentioned. And that rather than starting with some arbitrary number and then choosing that number of priorities, you should rather choose your priorities and then assign the resulting number. Also, surely there should be more than three top priorities. That is a number that seems more suitable for running a department, not an entire complex county government. Finally, once you have selected your priorities, the list needs to remain open to adding more throughout the year as emergencies and crises come up. Otherwise, the list becomes an exclusionary instrument of an empty bureaucratic government, which would hurt our people and their government rather than simply assure that important top priorities are addressed. You have already mentioned that law enforcement is your top priority. I assume the budget will also be on your list. The citizens whom you represent have already overwhelmingly told you that housing needs to be a top priority. And indeed, we have a Curry County resolution declaring that we are in a state of emergency due to the lack of housing. As our citizens' lives are at risk due to lack of housing, please make that one of your top priorities. There are not many easy fixes to this, but there are many actions which can help. And it is partially the responsibility of you, our county commissioners, to tackle such a complex and difficult challenge and make progress. One action that you could take at your next general meeting is to replace former county commissioner Boyce with one of you on the Oregon Post Community Action or ORCA Board of Directors, as ORCA provides housing-related services to our citizens. And there are currently problems with the delivery of such crucial services in Curry County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here's our discussion, priorities discussion.
Okay.
Annually.
Annually? Um, so I just give you, I mean, I'm sure you guys have these, but just in case you didn't. So, I mean, um, obviously this is a workshop, it's discussion, it's collaborative, it's uh, problem solving, it's um, an opportunity to kinda take apart and put back together some things, but uh, one area, you know, the, the, so I found the Curry County strategic plan. It's obviously, it's posted on our website. This was the 2020 to 2025 plan. And so, you know, I'm not big on redundancy and reinventing the wheel, right? So um, there are some, I mean, I, I think it's worth, it's worth going through this. There's very good, um, there's very good points in here of emphasis. And uh, and then, you know, um, kind of, you know, like, as mentioned earlier, times change, priorities change, um, situations change, all of that. And so, there may be things that, you know, we look at that we need to check off, or um, things we need to add, or, or things that we need to focus in on, right? You know, obviously, this is a five-year plan, but if we can, if we can go through here and, and see, find some things that are, um, that are, that are, we can get done this year that help us reach our overall goals. And some of those may be the goals themselves, who knows, right? But that's the discussion part. So, I mean, when I was going through this, um, you know, financial stability, goal number one, well, the, so the five goals that were put out was financial stability, economic development, quality of life, public trust, and infrastructure. All things that have been discussed here over.
Beginning of time.
Exactly, right? And so, um, you know, I, I found some things that were, were, were pretty, uh, you know, right there. Develop and implement a long-term financial plan for the county. I, I tried to find um, a, a, a long-term financial plan for the county as a guide tool for this upcoming budget. And I, I don't know if I was looking in all the wrong spots, but it's one of those things I, I had actually, it'd be, if there is one, great, then let's get it out, you know? If there isn't one, maybe we need to work to develop something like that, so that we have a roadmap financially. You know, and, and in here, it even says, consider appointing a fiscal sustainability committee composed of community members, or an internal review committee composed of staff. And the group would work before the board to ensure the county's fiscal activities are justified, efficient, effective, transparent, and sustainable. You know, it's, a lot has changed since my time, including the, including the position control roster. I, I was meeting with the finance. And um, you know, um, in 2000, at the end of 2013, when the county had public and mental health, we had 141 people on the control roster at the time, or on average paid throughout the year. 2015, when all of that had kind of been separated and we gained some stability, we were at, I think, I think it was reported at 115 average employees. And um, and we're currently up in the 130s without mental or public health. So, you know, this, what, or are, or are those, what are they, what are, you know, what are those positions doing? What are funding those positions, things of that nature? You know, we know TLT funds a lot of econ dev and et cetera. But anyways, regardless, um, that might be pertinent to look into, or at least, um, you know, it'd be interesting to see if we had a committee that identified whether our current scope of service is, where, where our current scope of service is. And those are things that will obviously um, help us if we are to move forward with a, with a long-term strategic financial solution, whether that comes in a levy or um, especially, you know.
Bond or whatever.
Whatever it might look like, yeah. So, um.
You know, Jay, when I look at that first bullet, develop and implement a long-term financial plan for the county, so this is in 2020, this started, so I don't think there was one, and I don't know if there was one developed, 'cause that's, it says that we should develop one, so I think that's where we're, we gotta start some.
Right, I think that that's a good starting point, is we, we need to know what the long-term financial strategy is, because even if we go out for revenue generating opportunities to, for sustainability, this is the information that the public's gonna want.
Yeah.
What is, you know? So, yeah, I think it's developing it, we can't implement something we don't have.
Right.
Right? So, um, you know, that's just, that, there's, there's, there's so many, we, we're gonna be, I mean, discussing so, so many, but I think if we can focus in on, on some of them.
There is a ton.
Then, then we can, you know, the, the, the next one, you know, was identify and prioritize the county core services. It goes right along with the strategic, with the financial plan, is part of the financial plan. And, and some of the sub-bullets, identify core services and service levels for both mandated services and non-mandated, incorporating staff and community input, and identify core services and service levels, determining staffing and funding needed to adequately support core services. You know, prioritizing programs and services to ensure delivery of strategic and essential services within a balanced budget. And then, you know, it goes on about seeking collaborative partnerships, looking for, you know, this in here, it says grant funding and trying to identify.
Do well then, yeah.
Right. So, uh, and then it gets into cost containment, so, you know, how to, you know, strategies for cost containment. This is a really, it's a really good document, as far as like a starting point for, for this discussion. And actually, it says, hold, I hold annual work sessions to identify potential cost savings and cost containment opportunities. And I don't know if those have been annually held or not, but um.
Not since I've been here.
Gotta start somewhere.
We haven't had a, yeah.
Gotta start somewhere. So, obviously, when you go into economic development, one thing that you will read in economic development is that a fair amount of the economic development goals and strategies have been, um, they have been done.
Okay.
They have, they have some, several of these things in their master plan have been identified, they have strategies for these things. So, so there, there has been momentum in, in that part of this plan.
Well, and part of that is, 'cause Julie Smelzer was the driver of this, right? 'Cause I remember she came to the Kuzco Electric Board, 'cause I think we pitched, everybody pitched in and.
We all worked on it.
Yeah. Okay. But she got it funded, 'cause it was a, it was a $50,000, I think, at the time.
Initiative?
Yeah. And it's, I don't think she paid, I don't think the county paid for it, I think she went around and.
I think it was a piece the county paid.
Okay.
But it was like, you know, a share.
Right.
A big 20%.
Yeah. But it was a collaborative effort document, and the document is, is, you can tell, it was, it's well-designed.
Moss Adams did it, I think.
Um, it has, it has no, nobody in here claiming.
They, they did it.
The, um.
Do you remember Renee?
We all did it, we, I think we've worked on that.
Moss Adams prepared the document, yes. It's right there, they did claim that part.
Okay.
But you can see, you know, all the Curry County leadership, the elected officials, the commission, residents, employees, everybody was, 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 was part of this. And I think we owe it to all of that effort to.
Yep.
Do what we can, to, I mean, it's, it's a good document. The quality of life doc portion is, is great. I mean, it talks about increasing housing options for residents to reduce incidents of homelessness and increase affordability, and it talks about some, some planning efforts, and it talks about permitting efforts, and it talks about some code enforcement efforts. You know, and identify secure permanent funding for law enforcement to meet communities' desired level of service. And, uh, you know, some of the, some of the sub-bullets in there are great. Continue to explore opportunities, combine duplicate services and resources related to public safety, focus on reducing redundancies between counties and cities, um, you know, evaluate the option of creating a law enforcement special district or tax levy. It's simply stated in here as one of the goals. And then up in here, bullets, if either option is pursued, invest resources into marketing and community outreach where allowed by law to provide clear and transparent public transformation around the need for additional funding to meet community requested service levels. But again, with that, um, you know, I, um, I hope or request that we receive, um, what that is, right? So, so what is, what is the, 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 the adequate budget for law enforcement? What does that look like? What is that budget? What is that budget?
Well, I think we'll, I think we'll get that answer when we get into the budget meetings. And we've discussed this before, we've discussed what it looks like to have a 24/7 agency, we've discussed what it looks like in the current situation. And I think we'll get that answer when we start the budget. Really, and Jay, I agree with everything you're saying, but really, the, the whole key to, to a plan, to this plan, is funding the sheriff's department independently. That's the key. And funding the sheriff's department independently, stop using the road funds, freeze up the general fund for other county services. And that is the, that, that is the answer to the puzzle, is getting to that point. So then, how do we do that? I think we are exploring the right options right now with a long-term plan of timber, the potential for the timber receipts to come back. I think that is certainly moving in the right direction, and there's a light at the end of that tunnel, but we don't know the outcome of that yet. In the meantime, we need to look at funding situations that would bridge the gap until we can solidify that long-term solution. That's where we are.
Okay, but I would say. That's been happening, right? We've been bridging that gap.
We, we have been by using the road funds.
Right, but you're saying continuing to do it until we can, but, but that's, that's been happening since this, and this has not moved forward. So I can't, I, I have a hard time absorbing that that is the answer, because, because if it was, we would be moving this forward, because we have been doing that. Does that make sense? Or no?
Well, we haven't, we haven't pursued the avenue, or, you know, that, we haven't picked, like, we talked earlier off-camera or whatever, before we, the meeting started, was, you know, pick something, we came, you know, we came close to a, a passing a levy, or a, whatever, a special, some way to fund law enforcement years ago, and that was with a Board of Commissioners, it wasn't even united, and it wasn't even behind, back in it. And so, you know, your, your suggestion was, we have, you know, we go back and we look at just how that was done with Renee and, and John and all that stuff that they went out and did. I, I remember John Ward standing in there saying, we went door-to-door with, with Joel and all these folks, the sheriff's department, and that's how, that's where we start, right? And, and now what do we do?
So we did.
That and plus more.
So we did do something last year. We, we examined and explored multiple possibilities of taxes. Sales taxes, taxes that were directed towards tourism. Dave Barnes had some, some ideas, we looked at some counties that were trying to pass, that were in similar situations trying to pass something. Then we, then we watched what happened to that, and we learned from it. And pretty much what we learned is, that's not an option.
That's not, that doesn't work.
So we've, in my opinion, we've eliminated that as a possibility.
Which one?
That, that was the.
What did you call that?
Potential for a targeted sales tax.
Oh, okay.
Tourism targeted sales tax.
What was the name? We haven't.
Oh, like a fund tax or consumption tax.
Consumption, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, we, we, we discussed it, we, we made multiple different options of it, we had presentations on it, uh, who was the commissioner that came and spoke to us? Did a phenomenal job.
From Josephine County. Dan DeYoung.
DeYoung, yes, he gave a, gave a really good presentation, and then they attempted to pass it, it wasn't even close. And then, you know, when you campaign, and I did last year, and you talk to people about, about that and about other options, what I learned from that and what I, what I saw and watched happen was that that is not something that the people here want. So I'm confident in saying that we should eliminate that as an option. So, so we have done that. We have done that. I think that we will understand more clearly where we are in, in the budget in the very near future, once we, once we start the budget process and get a report from Frank, and get an assessment of, of where we are, totality of our finances. And, and we may be, with the, with the interest rate change, with the, with the tribal money that we've got, we may be in a situation where we can kind of buy a little bit of time without impacting the road funds further. But we've gotta make a decision within this year of what we're going to do.
For next year.
For next year.
Yeah. Well, and the tribal money is one, possibly two-time money.
One-time, I, I think we should, we should count on it as one-time money right now, 'cause we, we don't know, there, there's been discussion about it, but we haven't got any real strong indicator that we get it twice, so I think we should, we should count on it, we have it now, so I think we should count on it.
Yes. Once, yeah. Yeah. And it's hard to use that one.
It, it is hard.
On personnel.
It is hard, it's.
One-time.
It, it really, it really would be more impactful to use it in the failing infrastructure issues we have here. Because it is one-time money. But we also have a responsibility to stay out of the road funds as much as we can.
Sure.
So.
It's balance, right?
It's the key.
Balance. But, uh, so, I mean, obviously we're saying, what I'm gathering, we're saying a, a, a funding solution, um, right?
The, the, the feedback that I've gotten is, the people in Curry County would like to see a 24/7 sheriff's department. Now, if the sheriff were here, he would tell you, we do respond 24/7, and, and they do. But when I say 24/7, I mean, we have sheriff's deputies on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that is what, um, in the interactions I have, I've had with the community last year, which again, when you run for office, you tend to have more, uh, more intimate actions with people, but what I gathered was, that's what the people want, an agency that's 24/7. So, I think we need to know what, what that cost is, and then, um, and then we need to look at what our funding options are to fund that independently, and what that's gonna look like.
I agree. I agree. A hundred percent, I mean, the goal, the, you know, our, our role is to provide government service.
Safety, the safety of our community is first and foremost to me.
I think it's to most all. You know, we have, we have government services, uh, and yes, protecting, protecting our citizens is number one. So, uh, so, so, there's, obviously, there's a lot of pieces in this, right? So one of the things that I'd share is, it was extremely, it has been extremely advantageous so far for, for, in a learning experience, was, um, so the school district was looking at bonds, right? 'Cause we have some failing infrastructure as well at the schools, and hired an organization, and I have the name of it right here, I won't say it publicly, but hired an organization, it's a consultant group that, that goes out and, and surveys the landscape, and, you know, they may put 10 things on there. And it's a, it's a, would you be willing to pay, you know, X for this? Would you be willing to pay X for that?
I think I got called on that survey for the Brookings.
Yeah, you probably did. So you get, you get, um, you get really good feedback, because then not only do they, it, it's not like they cold-call, they, they grab voter rolls, and they call based on, they have level one, level four, level four being a person who has voted in the four previous elections, every election. And a one is person who may not have, um, or voted once, right? So you have your, so, so when you break those numbers down, a lot of times, you'll see some of these people over here who are like, yeah, absolutely, yes, 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 yes. But then you get down to the brass tacks, and your threes and fours is a, is a number that is gonna be a little more realistic to what the outcome will be, because you know they're going to be in the vote. But it also provides a lot of really good information pre, it's like, you know, preseason, whatever. On, on what is most likely to pass, um, to be added into that levy, whatever the case may be. And so, you know, this, it might be a good opportunity to use some of that one-time money to do a, something along the, the lines of this, so that we can get that accurate information before, um, before we go out and, 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 and move this forward. 'Cause I, I don't know that those things were done in the past. I think a number was.
Well, if, and if you're, if you're, if your discussion is regarding a levy or a bond, which I'm, that's.
It'd be a levy, most likely, yeah.
Hearing from you, then I, I think that that is, that is one component, but there's a couple of other components that I think accompany that, and one is public trust, which the people of this county have not trusted county government for a while. We're doing things to change that, and I think since the beginning of the year, we've, turned the corner and we're, we're, we're having an impact on that. And I think we will continue to do that. But that, that's very critical to this too. And I, I think what you're talking about is a really good piece towards the community's voice, and what they want and how they want it. So I agree with that part of it.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, it would definitely, that information isn't gonna hurt us.
No.
Gives us a good roadmap.
The company you're talking about, would they also be able to help with education, educating the community about what the plan is, if we can come up with one?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the scope of that service. You know, I only got, worked with them on the consultation part for information on what, surveying the community.
This is what we're gonna have.
What they would be willing to be in a bond for, but.
Because that is, that is another key component to this, is the people need to understand what they're saying yes or no to. And it needs to be clear, concise, and really simple, and it doesn't need to be complicated. But I think we're gonna need professional help with that.
Certainly.
Structuring it.
I, I would not, but I, my, my assumption is, is they probably, if they don't, they probably know who does.
Sure.
Those circles work.
Sure.
So close together. But what you're getting into, like, is number four.
Right.
And is public trust, and, I mean, some of the things in here, to increase public trust, are, are, are not difficult, right? I mean, they identified, like, in, you know, having regular communication with the county, promote consistent, transparent communication, annual reports, monthly newsletter, county service guides, social media updates, press releases, et cetera. You know, public meetings to elevate the county's significant initiatives like this.
Right.
Having these more on a regular basis, maybe doing them, um, you know, I, I think. You know, I, I think at one point back in Wade, probably in the, back in the day, Renee would remember. They used to have. You know. Almost like, well, it wasn't just electeds, but it was like countywide leadership discussions.
Sure.
Almost quarterly. To, to work as a, as a unit. Not so much siloed. Obviously, everybody's in their own silo, but working together within those. And so, you know, bringing, having some of those discussions obviously increases. The communication, which ultimately. Is more transparent.
And I wanna continue exactly what we're doing and continue to do exactly that. I think it's important.
So. I think we nailed down one. Now, as the goal, so we see it's a priority, is the goal to have something on a ballot.
This year?
This year? I mean, that's part of the strategy too, right? Is it next May? You know, that's where I think we can work with some experienced people to figure out timing. You know, what, what is the best timing? What is the actual timeline that we need to do this and do it right? And not rushed.
I would say a realistic goal would be to have it. Structured and prepared to go on a ballot this year, but not necessarily on a ballot this year. Because I think we need time. I think we need time to continue to earn the trust of the people in this county. And I think we need time to educate and inform the people of this county, and we need time to listen to what they want.
Would it be maybe reasonable to say? We'd like to see this on a ballot within eighteen months, but we'd like to have everything prepared within, by.
The end of the year.
At least, we, we'd like to have our information gathering and, and have a solid plan by the end of the year.
I think that's realistic.
And then, you know, then, then, then that strategic plan is going to guide when that thing goes on.
Sure.
I don't think, you know, and I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a matter of when and doing it right, right? I mean.
So Renee, can you help us out with timing wise as far as? Yep. Because it's all, it's, you know, yeah, it's all about timing with the ballots.
So.
And for anybody watching right now, you probably can't hear.
Yeah.
Renee's voice. That was Renee Colan. She's in the audience right now, and her comment was directed to us. Encouraging us to seek out the county clerk and. Get her input on the timing of what we're discussing.
The ins and outs and, and everything else about this whole process. So. I mean, obviously, this is one that we're gonna be working together, but. You know, we, we need someone to be kind of the, the lead on it. Sounds like, would you be?
Sure.
Want to take the lead?
Sure.
And I can, I mean, we'll all meet, we're gonna reconvene to continue to meet and discuss it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I can.
Because there's all, there's pieces. You got the piece about the survey.
Yeah, yeah, there's lots of pieces that are gonna have to be transferred.
Pieces and, don't, don't be afraid to reach out, hey, I need, you know, go, I need you to find out this, or.
Yeah, obviously, just. We can work through Ted when we're not here.
Yeah.
What we need from each other and go from there. So. All right, well, then, I think what we probably, I mean, strategically makes sense is. What are the, what are, what are the things that? Is there a sub-goal that helps complement the movement of this goal? We talked about public trust, right? Is there a goal around public trust that we can advance forward? You know, the, some of this seems. I mean, some of it seems like we literally could get these done in months. And get some of this stuff, get systems set up to make sure that these processes are sustainable. And it's not like a once and one-time deal. We put a little effort into it and then it fades into the background. Because that will, that'll hurt us in the long run if we don't make it sustainable and build policy around it. In terms of, you know, if we're talking about. You know, annual reports, monthly, monthly newsletters, county service guides, we're talking about communication. Regular communication is the best communication. But some of these things are gonna require information from all our departments, right? How many building permits were issued this month? How many? You know, how many visitors were lodged in the jail this month? How many prosecutions did the DA have this month? You know, right? All of those things.
Sure.
So that, so that, I think the county, citizens can. Then have an appropriate scope of the things that we're doing, not just. You know, what they see on the BOC meeting.
Yeah.
Look at that, the county clerk showed us.
Yeah, some, somebody's watching. Somebody's watching.
Do you wanna, yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
Hi, Shelley.
My suggestion would be at the earliest made in twenty twenty-four. But. More than likely November twenty twenty-four. And that is the presidential, so you're gonna have a majority of your voters voting that. If you were to try to put it on the November of this year, it's not a regular scheduled election, so the county's gonna have to bear full costs. And that's gonna be about forty thousand dollars.
And.
That's good information.
I learned something from a previous attempt. That you want to go for the larger election, because. The assumption is, is the people that will show up to vote are the people who want it, but the people who show up to vote are. Anyways.
Well, and that was, that was kind of Brad's at the beginning was, you know, let's, we got this, we got this tribal money to. To get us through this year. And then really go hard next year. You know, part of the thing I see Jay on this. Is establish an annual community satisfaction survey. This is maybe the same folks that are doing this. But do it annually, statistically significant community data and track residential concerns over time. That way, we know. Year for year, what, what people are needing and what their concerns are. Annually, that, that, you know, and I don't, we haven't done that since twenty twenty when this. So that same outfit that we're gonna contact.
Well, I mean, the, the, the public trust initiatives in here, I think. There are a lot. You know, but, but it's, it's, it's a good second step. You know, I, I think we talk about. I mean, these five goals are pretty solid, right? It's, and it's finding ones within them that we say. Hey, let's knock these ones off. Let's knock these ones off the page. You know, this year. Quality of life, assessing, assessing our, our current, you know, permitting process and. And, you know. We're on housing committees, right? What are we doing in those, in, in those housing committees? What are the potential? What are the potentials for building sites? You know, what, 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 what has to happen to move things along? Right? I, I mean, but they're such big pieces of pie that if you look at them as a piece of pie, you're like, I'll never get through this. You know?
You don't eat the whole pie, you just gotta eat a piece of it.
But that's where this comes in, like what you said earlier, like the steps. Right? The steps, increasing, increasing public trust is going to be vital to being able to advance economic stability.
All of it.
Right? I mean, it's the foundation. Because that, I mean, so what are some of the foundational pieces of? What are some of the foundational pieces of quality of life? Right? When we talk about quality of life, and what, and how can we impact or affect those foundational pieces? What does that look like? Because it's not like we can just go out and pop up homes. You know, but what can we do to help improve those? And, and maybe, obviously, we don't, we don't, we don't have to obviously set our goals, but if we can identify what those are, then, then we can. At least meet next month and come back talking to some of the professionals who do these, do these every day. To, to, to come back with a more cohesive idea. You know, talk to building and planning and talk to those folks about what are some strategies that could do to help increase. The, the, the permitting and, 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 and. Some of the zoning stuff that we have to. Obstacles, and some of them we may not have any control over. They may be like, no, those are no-fly zones. People have tried for decades. You know, whatever the case may be, but. What can we do? So.
I think a lot more can be done.
Certainly.
Because I, I know people come before this board and ask for a reduction, we, we did it recently, a reduction in fees for. Short-term rental. It was, they're, they're gonna take, it's a, it's a big fee, but they're gonna. Section out a few short-term rental properties are in their, in their possession to make it just for. School district or nurses. So we lowered their fee, but when I hear. People in Brookings wanting to do a subdivision and nobody's willing to bend. The city's not willing to bend on their.
Service development charges.
Still, service development charges. Harbor's not willing to, to bend on their sewer sanitation fees. And I'm thinking, we're, we're aboard. We, we, we heard those folks and we said, we're gonna, we'll lower your. But nobody else does. Why can't they if we can? Why can't the city of Brookings say, no, that's a good idea. We need that subdivision to come in. Because, I mean, there's some property right by the park that is. Just ready to be built on, but, and, and we all, I think we all three know the gentleman involved in it. And they're, they're stymied because of. To make, you know, to make affordable housing work, you gotta make it, you, you can't charge them like it's gonna be. This huge condominium thing when it's gonna be affordable, because they're gotta make it a little. Does that make any sense? It's like.
Oh, certainly. It's just, it's, it's. It's.
We're handcuffing folks.
It's, 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 it's hard, right? Because. That's, it's a whole different jurisdiction, right? It'd be like the state saying, why can't we control what Curry County's doing with, with the Second Amendment? Right? You don't want them to. So it's a, it's a tough conversation because it's a muddied water in terms of, you know, we don't know. They have a council. They've obviously discussed it. Those are things that are not within our purview, I guess. But, but what is, is what we can impact, right?
And here's what we can impact. What, what we can impact is communication, and communication is what we, has been absent. Communication trust has, has been absent in this county for a long time, and we can impact that. We have a workshop scheduled, and I don't know when it is, but, and I'm, I'm gonna use this as a catalyst or an example. Of, of what I'm suggesting. So. We have a workshop coming up. We had an issue with emergency services and warming centers. And we have a workshop coming up that we are preparing. That will address protocols and procedures around that specific issue. And at that workshop, we will have. Our city managers, our mayors, and council invited to that. So that they can have a clear understanding of what the county's emergency services director can offer. And that we can be on the same page when it comes to what those protocols will be. Example. Which months of the year, what conditions would trigger an emergency response, that type of thing. And we'll learn from city managers and mayors what their strategy and positions are. And they will learn what we can provide them and what our positions are.
And then everybody will have a binder that they pull off, or?
That's the plan.
When that happens, they say, oh, well, this is the first person we need to call, this is, right?
But what I'm suggesting is to do that with the other topics that are critical to our community. That being housing. And, and, and all of the other things. And if we can get our city councils, our mayors, our city managers to the table with us. We can have these conversations. I think it will also impact the public's trust of us.
Agreed. If we could get back, what I was talking about with, like with Renee, is back, they used to have, it was a quarterly. County, basically a county leadership meeting. It included. All pretty much the electeds and on a quarterly basis.
And, you know, another example of that is, and granted, the city of Gold Beach is in a different position than the city of Brookings. But the city of Gold Beach has taken some pretty aggressive steps in, in modifying and, and changing. Their fee structures, their ordinance structures to accommodate and encourage more housing. And maybe some of those would be impactful to the city of Brookings. Maybe impactful to us. So I know that I've talked to Mayor Kaufman about this before, and it would be good. For everyone to hear what they're doing and, and how that's fitting into what their strategic plan is. I don't know what their strategic plan is. I know what Brookings is because I was a city councilman there, but. I don't think you do, and it would be good to have those discussions.
Yeah. Agreed. And I think that. So. Just thinking about, so that we can add that into public trust, right? But if we look at this document, we look at, you know, the three of us. If, if you were to take the financial stability piece, that's giant in its own, right? And, and for instance, John, if you were to take goal two, economic development and quality of life. And work with those folks to get some information, and I take public trust and infrastructure. And start working on some of those goals, we can come back and say, these are the realistic, I think, the smart goals. That, you know, specific, realistic, attainable, timely, measurable, that we can. Bring back and say, this is, these are what we, this is what we got. And we can probably get it done ahead of budget, so that if we have to budget certain items to move these goals forward. We have that in our minds.
Our first budget meeting is.
April fifth, I believe.
That's, that's our next, that's our next.
No, I, I think it's the end of April.
And April fifth is our next BOC meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Do you know, JJ?
The first budget meeting where we get the budget books and the budget message is the first Monday in May.
Okay, May, okay. So if we came back. You know, this, 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 whatever it is, third. Oh, Wednesday, was it fourth Wednesday? If we come back. On the twenty-sixth. On April twenty-sixth and, and, and have some ideas on some measurables in these little, in these areas. Is that, is that workable?
Yeah. So we have a meeting on the fifth, the nineteenth, so that, yeah, yep.
The twelfth, I think we're gonna be talking, I think, is that the TLT meeting, I think, or something of that nature, somewhere there?
TLT or emergency services.
Yeah, so we have something set there, okay.
We have both of those coming up.
Yeah, but come back on the twenty-sixth and, 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 and get back, you know, get some, well, I'm sure we'll get public input and.
Actually, we may be doing a workshop on the fifth or whatever our first April BOC meeting. We may include a workshop in that.
In the afternoon?
In the afternoon, and then catch the EOC meeting the following.
Well, if, if we were able to get it on the nineteenth, no, that's the regular meeting. It'd have to be the twelfth, which is probably too soon. That's only two and a half weeks away.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Twenty-six is good, I think.
Okay. Because the first budget meeting is just, like you said, it's budget books and whatever, right? It's not.
It's bringing everybody together and handing out the material to review.
Yeah, that's May first.
A little bit more time to be prepared on what it actually will cost.
Yep, and we could actually be breaking those costs down as we proceed through the budget, too.
Okay. I don't even mean, is that doable? You got two and three, I got four and five, and you got number, you got one?
Yeah.
We'll see what we got, come back. Were there anything on, in, was there, was there anything within here besides the one we just discussed about the, kind of the? within here besides the one we just discussed about the, kind of the countywide leadership? Is there anything in here that, that's not, or that's, that's missing?
The only, the only thing, and again, it's, it's kind of a public trust component, which we're already addressing, and that is the rules of order of these meetings. Um, again, we've made significant change. Uh, if anybody who watched a BOC meeting a year ago, uh, versus now, I think you'll, I think that change is loud and clear. So, um, but I, but we can tighten that up and those rules of order are important. And I know we're addressing that and I know it's moving forward, but I think that's a big, uh, piece to that public trust as well, Jay.
And we do have that coming forward.
Coming forward.
Yeah. That, um, I think we're Ted, Ted and I are, we almost, I think we're, we're close to having something to be able to present to the, to the rest of.
Okay. Very good.
So I'll add that into number four.
Well, is it time for public comments? You know what? I think we should just grab that microphone and pass it around instead of having to get up there and be so hoity. Well, okay.
Randy's gonna have a hard time chasing him off the camera.
Well, Joe, you're up first.
Well, so Don go first.
Sure.
Cause he's gonna speak for the district.
Yep. You betcha. Yep.
Hi, Don Kendall, uh, Seeka Beach over Water District. Listening to you, I have changed some of what I wanted to talk to you about really quickly is that services in this county, I think should be involved because they need two things. Water services, health and safety, because all of us are trying to bring clean, clear, fresher water to people. And then the second side of it is infrastructure. Everybody's infrastructure is in decline. And our development charges, that's one of the things that carries us on in major work that we do. Regular earnings is something that it really doesn't because we only end up with a short piece that's left at the end of it. But I think all of the service organizations were to talk to you. I think they would all understand where we're going. If the city can work on their development charges, if I can, they extend it to districts and somewhere. And I would like to see some work with you. I'm not saying go out there and grab them and drag them in.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to maybe approach the different districts, the sewer districts, the water districts, electrical. Because if you're putting a development in, electrical has to come in also. So, you know, everybody getting a, a seat at the table, so to speak, so that we can all start discussing since it can all work together. Because my goal, as yours is, is to reach a public trust back into it. And I think if we're all talking, not just like you were saying, Jay, I remember those days of having all the department heads together and we talked, but also all the service and supply people.
That's a good point. Voices. You know, talk about broadband.
Oh, yes. Yes. Verizon, uh, you know, anybody, a whole lot of people. Because I think our towers, if I remember my days back being in emergency services, our towers are getting lightened. If we put an extra thousand people in this county, I think some of our cell towers might be taking a huge hit too.
Yeah, I don't know. That's out of my realm. You're welcome, Don. Joe?
I'm Joe Wilson. I live out in the, the Seeka Beach area of Curry County. Came here today to speak for myself and also to represent the majority of voters who voted against the unconstitutional ballot measure 114. Right now, that ballot measure, even though it only passed by 1%, and 80% of the counties in this state voted against it overwhelmingly, like our county here in Curry, is only being held up because of one judge in Harney County. Right now, today, at this very moment, the people behind 114 is in the state legislature debating instituting the gun control that is in 114. That's happening, uh, today. Those people represent the voters of Portland and Eugene, the voters who, who passed 114. What is really discerning is just recently, we had a bill that passed, spoke to the House and the Senate and our legislature, allowing for $200 million for housing. But in that bill was hitting language that says, for counties like Curry, if you do not do what the state mandates you to do with that 200 million, whatever they're going to tell you, you have to spend on housing, they can cut off your other funding, not even related to that $200 million housing bill. What concerns me about that is so late past this gun control. We do not have independent funding for our sheriff. And we have a constitutional sheriff. He answers only to the voters and, and the constitution that he took an oath to, to defend the constitution about against enemies foreign and domestic. And also I would say he answers to God that gives us our rights. But where is this funding? It isn't independent. We need an independent funded sheriff department. He doesn't answer to the FBI. He doesn't answer the state police. He answers to the constitution and he answers to the voters. And that's why, as to your highest priority, in my opinion, would be to protect the citizens and our rights. I, I don't know how, I, I, I think you are talking about possibly having a vote on independently financing the sheriff. I know that that has not been successful in the past, but things have changed. And I, I think that we're on the, on the edge of losing constitutional rights in this, this state. And the only thing that can protect the people of this county is the sheriff. And he needs to be having funding that he can count on so he can do that. So that's what I'm advocating today, is that we put to the vote of the people, and I believe the majority of the people that came out and said they're against unconstitutional laws, will support independent funding for our sheriff. Any questions?
Oh, I, I, I like it, Joe. I, I think you use that in our favor.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll do anything I can to help pass that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, we know Joe knows how to make a postcard. So, yeah, it worked, it worked with housing in, uh, the Ofer area. So, um, yeah, Joe, I, I'm, I'm in agreement. Liked it. Dave Barnes? Did you have another one or did?
No, I just made notes.
Okay.
Cause I wrote my paper. Um, Dave Barnes, I don't know if I'm talking as a treasurer or as a private citizen, but, um, a couple of things I wanted to point out about the conversation that's been happening. Um, I think Dan DeYoung is a vital source to go to for, he spent two years working on the consumption tax over in Jokob. And he put together focus groups. They had public forums. They had, um, studies done and everything else. I think it was important to reach out to Dan to find out the legwork that he's already done. So we don't have to repeat that kind of stuff. Um, when we talk about development fees, I just, I come from back east and I, I watched development happen back there out of control. And let's me give you an example here. If, we have the little Borax property down in Brookings. They're talking about somewhere between 500 and a thousand houses that live on that property. Um, if they put 500 houses, you average, if you average 1.5 kids per household, you're looking at additional 750 children that are gonna go, that are gonna show up at the Brooklyn school system. When they do this, who's paying for the classrooms? Who's paying for the teachers? It won't be the developers. It'll be the rest of the taxpayers in the city of Brookings. You know, when you talk about removing the system development charges, I know that hooking up to Harbor sanitary is a huge fee. The last time I heard it was almost $7,000 per unit. That money goes to the upkeep and the expense of maintaining that whole system. Everybody who's already hooked up to it has paid this money. So if you start taking people and telling new developers that they don't have to pay their system fees, well, if I live here and you're telling somebody new that you don't have to pay something and I already had to pay, I'm not gonna be happy about that. So, you know, that's, that's something to keep in mind, you know? As more houses grow and more houses come, you need to expand your systems. And that's what the system development fees go for, is to your future expansion and upkeep of your systems, I believe. Um, in terms of public trust and the, the document that you're reading, Commissioner Choos, you know, I remember years gone by, there used to be every year the sheriff or one of the commissioners wrote a state of the county message of what had happened over the prior year. And it was published on, it's part of the, um, commissioner's notebook is, it's published on the county website every year. We haven't had one of those in a few years now. And, you know, before we talk about where we're going, I really think that we need to understand where we are. You know, where are we in public trust? What has happened for us to lose the public trust? We need to understand that before we can start building back again. You know, our infrastructure, what is our overall, the status of our overall quote unquote, infrastructure? Until we know that, you know, I know that Don and Joe come, have been the last few meetings talking about the problems with Seeka Water. Well, Port Orford has problems with their water. You know, other people have issues with water. Until we know the full scope of everything, how do we move forward until we know, we know where we wanna go, but we need to know where we are first, you know? And that, that goes for all five steps of the, of that plan that you had, Jay. So, you know, we need to really, I think we need to do an assessment, an overall assessment of where we are before we can figure out how to get where we wanna go. Um, that's just, you know, those are just my thoughts on this. Uh, finances, you know, we're in a bad spot. You know, we don't have money. I'd love to see some timber money coming in. I think that if we don't reach out soon to BOEM and to others, that we're going to miss out on offshore wind money if that's something that ever comes here. Um, I know that there's a senator from New Hampshire, I believe it is, who put together a revenue sharing bill that's for the senator in the House back in Washington. I spoke to, um, Senator Berkeley's aide about this when they were here last month. Um, I don't think revenue sharing or profit sharing is the way to go. I think revenue sharing is the way to go. You know, profit, it can take a long time to make a profit on something. So I'd rather see when they sell these leases out here, if they sell a lease for a billion dollars, that 1%, 2%, 3% comes to us. You know, we, we create some, find some way of, of tapping into that money that might be out there. And as soon as it starts flowing, we start seeing some money. You know, those are, you know, that's the issues that we're facing. You know, we, we need to do, I don't know what we need to do. You know, I don't know how to overcome the issues that we've gotten ourselves into. I've only been coming around here eight years. You know, we talk about lack of public trust. The fact that we have 42 special districts screams to the lack of trust that people have had in this government for a long, long time. You know, public, the special interest is, is democracy is purest. A small group of people with a common interest get together, levy a tax to fund that interest. That's what the special districts are. All these districts that we have didn't rely on the county to provide for them. And that's why they formed. And some of them, you know, I send out taxes every month. Some months a district might get two or three dollars, you know, but they make money on operating expenses also. So, you know, but that's at the end of the day, that's, you know, that's the issue of public trust. It's longer than any, than I've been around here, probably many of you have been around here. People just haven't trusted county government. And how we get past that, I'm not sure. But I'm willing to work and do whatever it takes alongside you to get there. So, thank you.
Next comments, questions? No, he said Dan DeYoung?
Yeah.
Dan DeYoung was, uh, he was the commissioner that came and spoke here about the consumption tax.
Yeah.
That they, that they were working on and that they voted on.
Okay.
And that got voted down, um.
By 70 or 80?
Significantly.
Two, three, four. Yeah. But boy, he could sell ice to Eskimo.
But one of the, one of the things that they did do and they did well was, um, communicate with the public through town halls and surveys and studies and that type of thing. So he would be very impactful to share with us how they did that and where they got the biggest bang for their buck there.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
Um, I, I, I wanna talk about one thing that, that Dave brought up, and that is the, uh, the offshore windmills. Um, I wanna be really, really clear that I don't in any way support that at all. Uh, not that, that, the proposed project to put that stuff in our ocean will be a negative impact to everybody who lives in this county and we get nothing from it. I don't support it. I don't agree with it. And I haven't talked to anybody in this county that's for it. However, that being said, um, that, that may be happening. And we have no choice, no choice at all in the matter. And if it happens and there's absolutely nothing we can do to stop it, then we probably should be doing something to.
Maximize, yeah.
To maximize some benefit for the people of this county. Because right now, they're gonna put those in and we're not gonna see a damn thing from it.
No, what we'll see is a bunch of windmills in our sunset.
Correct. And a bunch of damage to our.
Yeah.
To our environment, to our economy.
Our economy, to our fishing.
And every, and everything that we enjoy, our way of life will be impacted by that. So, uh, but Dave makes a good point about that, that we, we, and I have been doing my due diligence to stay on top of that issue. Uh, the timing of that issue, um, and communicating with, uh, Senator Smith about it. But, uh, as a, as a board of commissioners, we need to be on top of that as well. And, and we need to be, um, advocating appropriately first to stop it. But, but in the event that we can't, then we, we've gotta try to reap some benefit from it for the people who live here.
Agreed. It'll be interesting to see what the tactics are, where the strategy is, you know, if it's a, you know, it comes down to, uh, easement fees, uh, you know, if it comes down to, uh, ordinances that, uh, you know, create a fee schedule for, um, exporting energy through the, through the, through, through county lines.
It's all very uncharted.
It, it is, and we essentially have no say in it.
Oh, I know. That's, yeah.
No say at all, you know? Like Brad, I, I'm 100% opposed to this, but I also have learned my lesson that if somebody's gonna voice something on you against your, against your interests, that you make it as, as palatable as possible. And the only way to do that is to charge them a pile of money. Whether we charge onshoring fees or they bring it onshore, or we charge a tax on the electric that comes through. Like, uh, there's, there's an issue now where if they build them, the people who are gonna build the windmills only care about getting their cables to each.
Yep.
And then there's somebody else that's gonna take over from there. So, but they're talking about new transmission lines to have to run out of here, which means more clearing and everything else. And, you know, if they're gonna do this, it is incumbent on the three of you to really stand up and make our voices heard. You know, the next commissioner here who's now over the state house, came back from a meeting last year and made the statement sitting up in front of this room, that he believes that wind power is the new timber for Curry County. So for the three of you to be opposed to it, we have at least one person on the cell representing us who seemed to be in favor. The last time he spoke of in this room. So, you know, it, it, we need to make our voice heard. Thank you.
Well, and I think we all know too, that this is power going to California. It's not even Oregon power. There is no transmission line. Transmission lines stops in Brookings. So, it, yeah, if they, if they need power, put it off of, I mean, Brookings is close to California, but it, it doesn't make any sense. But, but I'm in agreement. We, uh, we gotta, if it happens, we got to be on top of it and reap some benefit.
Yeah, certainly.
Well? Well? Okay.
Thank you.
Any guys, anything else? Okay. Thanks for coming. And uh, meeting adjourned. You bet.